So Chris, Chris is gonna.
Chris is gonna record this just because in fairness, anybody who wants to answer those questions, we want to make sure that people can see it. And plus, I don't want to have to repeat myself or anyone else for that matter. So I'm gonna try to do my best to chair the discussion. But what we'll do is we'll go through, uh, we'll start with question one. And I'll just open it up to any questions that you have regarding question one, two, I mean. And I'll start from left to right, just so I kind of get this some flow and then we go to question two. So is there any questions on question one?
Just a second. So I, I think, and I'm looking down through the examples of the different cities that did it. I know Megan touched on it a few times. I would just have a little bit of a concern on this one. Without going through, I apologize, I put all this together in the last couple of days. So I wasn't able to formulate all my questions. But I had a little bit of concern with just the powers between mayor and city council and in between the city attorney and having that balance of power. When you had talked about, you know, the mayor not seeing your daily duties, I agree with that. It's always been something hard for me to, you know, understand how we were supposed to be responsible for that. But also just on keeping the power balance between the mayor and council. And so when I'm looking at this, it just, as a reminder, I'm not looking at David. I'm just looking at the city attorney's position in the, in the future for whoever would be there next. And so just looking at that as a conflict of interest. And I don't want to put you on the spot in front of everybody, but is there anything that you can see as far as your duties as being a lawyer and of course, like you answer to the bar, you, in your own separate official capacity and your professional capacity? Is there a conflict of interest in between having like a boss, so to speak, as a city administrator and carrying out your duties as a lawyer as well?
No, so, okay, so, I mean, that's, and that's a good question. So really, and this would go for every city attorney, it's similar, it is similar to private practice. You could assimilate it to somebody who's an in-house counsel, for example, you know, in-house counsel for Cox Health or Associated Electric or anybody like that. So it would be similar to that. At the end of the day, it, it wouldn't change the nature of the attorney-client relationship. The client for anybody in-house is the business. So the client is the city as a body.
Still be the counsel.
Yeah, so it does, it wouldn't change anything in terms of the attorney-client relationship or the privilege or that dichotomy. And I would point out too, because it's an interesting question you raised. And this is why I separated this by color coding in the chart that I did. Just because I thought you guys might want to see what other cities are doing. When this was brought to my attention, I personally was, what is it, what do everybody else do? And so I was interested to find that there's really just a mix. There's a mixed bag of what everybody's doing. And so I wanted everybody to see kind of unhighlighted the difference between the blue and the green. And so the blue is a city manager administrator setup only. The green is any combination of mayor and council. Now, some of these cities, their mayor is a voting member of the governing body. I thought what was really interesting was the combination of the two. And this was something that I, I thought was, would, might be particularly appealing in our current setup, particularly to you guys as council members, is some of these cities have sort of combined the two where the city administrator or city manager makes essentially the selection, if you will, on who should be the city attorney. And then obtains either advice of council, which wouldn't technically require a vote, but obviously it requires your involvement and feedback. Or they'll actually say a city administrator upon consent and approval of council. And so to your point, I mean, that, yes, essentially removes the mayor, if you will. But in a city such as ours, where the mayor is a non-voting member, that might be something that you guys would want to consider. And so those examples are in here too. And you can see there's only four of them, but there is literally blue and green in all of them. You know, so Clayton, for example, is in, they're an example. So it's a city manager appointment, but the city manager has to obtain approval of the council. So there are different sorts of things we could do with this. I think at the end of the day, the end goal was just to make it more consistent with what our current practices with the day-to-day operations and frankly, the limitation that is in our charter. The mayor can't do that, he's prohibited from doing that. So that was, I think, the original thought behind this a few years ago when it was brought up for the first time. And then I do think in looking closely at this, it is important, when this goes on the ballot, to establish those other very basic provisions that are frankly, missing from our charter. I mean, I think it just, for consistency purposes, as a code, it really should establish the office officially. So it's a defined term, it's a defined office, and then it has very basic minimum qualifications, like you would see on any other constitution.
Sure.
So sort of a combination of a few initiatives, but I think they would all go together in a single topic well within what we should be doing for our question, single-subject rule and so.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
I, I also believe, this is one that I want to do in 2019. And it's not because of a, it doesn't matter who the administrator is. But I think if you're running it like, as, if you look at it from a business perspective, when I was talking about attorneys before, having an appointed officer that has no, there's, if you read the charter, there's no clear delineation of any duties whatsoever. It doesn't even suggest that there's an annual review. It doesn't even have a setting those things out. So it's very, very vague, but how the practical application, I mean, a lot of people do not, you know, I've been asked by this body to do the performance review each year because of the way it actually functions, because that's the way business would operate. So we're just trying to set it up in, to the capacity that it actually functions, because there would be some level of liability for me in an employment side, doing the review for someone that's appointed by the mayor in this body. And so option B is if we weren't to go down this path, one of the things that we've discussed would be appointing a city attorney and then hiring or evolving into a staff attorney that's a day-to-day attorney, but the council has an appointed city attorney that could govern on those higher different powers, but to have someone that's a staff attorney, it doesn't even mention prosecutor, prosecutor duties that our city attorney does as well. So from the practical day-to-day work, it, it just is not set up well. Which is why we changed, for those that did not see the last change in 2019, it also set forth that the city clerk was an appointed position. And the voters changed that to report to the city administrator. So basically, it'd just be myself and the judge, that would be an appointment. If this was passed.
Yeah.
Any other questions on question one?
I did, but just want to add really quickly to your point. You can see there on page three in the green text, and this isn't on your slide, I apologize. It is, it's on page three of the word document. But it says there for term, and I think this is also something that's important to be addressed in the charter is because as you guys all know, currently, our city attorney position, and I'm not, for the record, I'm not speaking about just me, this is how it's been for the city attorneys, at least in recent memory for me, before me, was they all have a contract that sort of governs the terms of their employment, which is working fine, at least from my perspective. And I think that's something that can absolutely be codified in the charter and probably should, if that's the plan going forward, just no, no issues with that, it being communicated to my department. So in term, there you can see, I also have proposed, just in some language for discussion, is council involvement in that process as well, you know? And so it's, it would say, you know, the contract shall be renewed at the discretion of the city administrator each year in consultation with the council. So again, that's essentially recognizing the, the good parts of the procedure we have now, and it doesn't take out your involvement, it actually mandates your involvement still in that process. So it's almost like he would decide, but he has to involve you guys in that process. And that's just something that I, I am proposing here, just something that I think would work.
Sure.
Will be consistent with the way we currently practice.
Good.
So.
And that, that's nothing I've seen from here, it's just watching other councils and seeing a lot of discussions where I just kind of felt that as city attorney and that there was some, something funny going on. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had accountability and still.
Yeah.
Sounds like we, we still have ways of holding, holding the city attorney accountable.
Yeah, sure, oh, yes, for sure. And those are all good points, that's, that's why I sort of anticipated that. And so to put that into text and just to kind of put that to you guys, to just see what your thoughts were. And so that's why I would point you to the language I've drafted there, which I kind of tried to think through everything that you're pointing out really, really thoroughly before I put that together.
And to clarify, the accountability you're talking about really lands on the city administrator. So if the city, say, the city attorney was not being accountable and the city administrator's not holding them accountable, then you have issue with your administrator, like you would with any other department. Like are you, why are you not administering that? So I'm probably not going to lean as much to the consult of council. I'm, that part I probably am not a hundred percent like.
What's it, yeah.
If you gotta make a decision, I'm not gonna want to go consult on a, like, I don't consult with my police chief or finance director. So there's probably some provisions of that, that's like, if you want to add it, I understand it, but it would not be consistent with the rest of the city staff. And that would be one thing that I think would have to be discussed that I don't, if, if you're not going to extend the contract to someone, but I could do this for other executive leadership team positions if we wanted to stay consistent. But that would not be consistent with what we're doing now. So I think that this is pretty much to clear, to clear delineation that it's for me that sets forth, or even for the administrator that has accountability and performance-related opportunities to address those without having to come into this body and do that. I think that'd be, get very muddied and becomes very political. In fact, I think there's some places where the police chief's actually appointed as well.
That's correct.
And so I think.
So that leaves the mayoral appointment, or not appointments, but the city admin with the advice and consent of council, city admin and the municipal judge, those are the only two within that scope?
And it, because, and it would be, it's, I, I look at it like a Fortune 500 company or Fortune 100 company, you got a board of directors and you got a CEO. And if the CEO, that's, that's the appointee that they make. And I think that.
Change of command.
Yeah, and, but also, I would say this, is I'm not, historically, I've been doing this for a while. I've just have never seen it where it's appointed by the, the mayor or the council.
Sure.
Practically, just speaking, it just, the flow of it works better. Question two?
I've got one on that, just a, a brief on the breakdown of the elections. I understand we need to stagger to get things back to normal. But why are we doing two one-years for group B instead of just a two-year?
Because we cannot change that without doing it. Because we can only do a one-year term this year, because our charter says that that's our standard at the moment. We can't do anything on this election that would change on the charter initially. Like, so if, if it's a change on the charter, we can't do it on this election because the charter hasn't changed.
Which hasn't changed yet.
Gotcha, okay.
And there's the only way to get us there. 2024 election that's already set by the current charter. And so if this was passed by voters in April, that change wouldn't go into effect yet. So we'd already have to have that one-year term election, if that makes sense. And then to catch them up is why we would add the 2025 election under the authority of the newly enacted charter after the April 2024 election. Does that make sense?
It does. I was just looking at the cost, we were talking about the cost of the election.
Sure. It's much cheaper than August or November.
You know, I didn't comment on this one earlier, but one of the biggest challenges we've had in this is having people that were, having people serve it three and a half years or something and there's not an election. So this, this provides the opportunity for every two years, you're guaranteed that you can fill a vacancy or if somebody's there, there's a vote. So I think this is a much cleaner person. Question two, any more questions? Question three? And Laura, I, or whoever did that little, you know, spaghetti junction there.
Both of us, it was a team effort.
Yeah, that, I, that's why I told you, you're presenting it. Question three, any questions on question three?
And David, the point you just highlighted, that is that interrelationship with this question that I pointed out earlier.
Okay.
What you're saying was staggering. This essentially would achieve the same thing, but I hope we've kind of articulated that this is actually for a different purpose. Sort of the same meaning behind the questions we get, but I think this still probably needs to be revised, just to clarify it.
Question three?
Anybody have any questions on that one?
This one had an alternate option, did any of you have feedback? The first one we offered was the one we're recommending, but there was the alternate of a term limitation.
Yeah, and this is something we see in other cities that charters similar to ours. They mix a, their charter originated as almost a copy paste job. Their city attorney said he would be fine with me saying that because it's true. But they amended this particular provision for theirs, for instance. And they have a one or two-year limitation, which is essentially a time check on that three-and-a-half-year example David said, but I don't, you know, this is just an option. It's not a majority of cities that do it that way by any, and if question two were to pass, this would not be necessary. So we just wanted to pose a couple of different options, so you guys were aware of what's out there.
Yes.
All right. This is the next regular municipal election. We're expiring council seats on the ballot. If somebody leaves in the middle, you're gonna have to wait until the election to fill that seat?
So this alternate is if question two were to fail. So if, if question two was to, were to pass, then they would just wait till the next, the next municipal election one should be the two-year stagger to run for that office. But you, there's, there's still be a mayor appointment. Yeah, no, there's nothing in this that takes away the mayoral appointment in a vacancy. But in a situation like Mr. Campbell's in right now, you may be serving four month, or four, four months, not actually four months, actually, you're here less than a month, and you gotta go sign up to run again, so.
And then again.
And then again, the.
Twenty-five.
Yep.
If, if you take the one-year seat, yeah.
So to clarify that, the, the first wording for question three would be, even if you're group B and you get appointed, if group A is the next step for election, you would also be up for election then? And then the alternate wording is you would wait until group B is up? And you're, if you were appointed to a group B seat, is that right?
The next, whichever one is up for election, the next time, the appointments would be filled then. And it would only be for the term to finish out the term of the person that left. So say your option, your group A, group B's up for election, but somebody left, we would fill that seat and then they would be up for the election with A again. Which is how it's always been done, we just didn't always have four-year terms.
Any other questions on question three? Question four. So this is about changing it to allowing for ordinances and other things to be added to the consent agenda again?
So this was just in specific instances with the single read and not having that week in between? Or was that with all ordinances?
Specific, we would not do it for all.
And that's something that has to be requested beforehand in order to have that?
It would, it would be on the agenda when I sent it out to you on Thursday, and you would have the option to say, hey, no, I want, I want this one to be talked about.
Okay.
And in the instance of two votes and passage in the same night, it would have to be a unanimous vote in order to have both readings in the vote. Otherwise, it would have to wait until the next one. There's, there's some protection in there.
There, there's, so if it didn't pass unanimously, then it would come back for a second read the next.
Right, normal procedures.
So it doesn't completely endanger?
No.
The, okay.
Nope, and you guys would have that at every meeting. I mean, so if a staff member presenting an item requests consideration that it be second read that night, you would hold that vote. If everybody present so votes yay, then it could proceed to second reading. If one of you guys present says nay, it's gonna go to second read at the next meeting.
Okay.
The consent agenda piece comes in for ones that have already been first read at the preceding meeting. And that's in that language on the second two sentences.
Okay.
So you don't always have to listen to me read it.
To the second reading of the ordinance, and, and citizens aren't allowed currently to speak on the second read anyway.
Correct, so it wouldn't change that.
Okay, and that was my biggest concern on that one, was just the fact of having that week in between. And there's a lot of communication that happens between then. And being able to see it and hear it from there, a lot of times helps connect a citizen to whatever it is. And again, my fears with that consent agenda, but if we have a process of taking it out.
Yeah, so.
Sure.
I just don't want to have a city council meeting, it's only two things either, so.
Well, you guys are always entitled to request something to be removed from the consent agenda. And so whether this passed in our charter in this form or not, we recognize parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules currently by code. So you guys always have the right to do that, that doesn't require a vote. So if, you know, Councilman Franklin says, I'd like to remove this from the consent agenda, it has to be removed from the consent agenda. That also, and the procedure that Laura and I talked on, that we came up with here is, which I like, is by making that printing of the title on that second meeting in a consent agenda, that gives you guys at least those five days in advance where you know, I mean, that's tipping you off, hey, they're gonna want to do this second read on consent agenda. You can request it be removed via emailing it to Laura ahead of time or at the meeting. And so it gives you guys a heads up too, which I, which I liked that. And make that a satisfaction of the second reading requirement under the current language. So it really doesn't take away your power, how, any of the powers at all to really control the flow of the meeting. It just allows for more flexibility.
Sure.
If council is on board with that flexibility for that item.
And not having to have the repetition of everything, that's like the final plats. And when Andrew really said that, it really kind of made sense as to why we would do that.
Yeah, again, there, between now and the first read, any questions or like those things that we can get with you individually on as well, that we can help provide clarity to what that is? Because I can go into the weeds of every single detail that this is gonna help along the way. But one thing I will say for this particular question, it is not meant to subvert anything. It is meant to move at the speed of business when it's coming to a development on a final plat. Because there's one, there's one thing about that in, in MML training, I'm hoping that they're doing, because I've seen it here even at this body, is when you get to a final plat and you're approving it, it's already, I mean, all the work has been done. And getting into stormwater issues or street issues or street lighting issues, if it's not ready to be built, it's not coming here for final plat. So there are some things that almost put, position us for potential litigation, because we're talking about things after the fact that have already been approved. And it kind of, so there's some areas to protect us here, but the consent agenda is available to you to withdraw something at any given time. So we've just, I've just never seen us procedurally do it here. Any questions, any other questions on question four?
Can I throw in a couple clarity pieces?
No.
Please, thank you. If there is something that we have had people speak against, we're not gonna put it on consent. No matter what.
I'd heard one time mentioned asking the audience or asking for.
That's what Springfield does. So they will ask, I think Jocelyn does it as well. So the mayor will ask the clerk if anybody has requested anything to be removed. Then we'll ask if any council members want to remove it. And then actually ask the audience before moving forward with a vote.
Okay.
So there's protections like that as well. But again, I can remove it same day I send it out. If you see something, you're like, no, thank you.
Sure.
I can change it super easy. The other piece is if you want to vote no on an item on consent, you don't necessarily have to pull it separate for a different vote. You just would have to let me know that on this item, I'm voting no, on the rest would be yes.
Do your votes in exclusion?
That's one of the confusing pieces that we want to be. It would just be in the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, just make sure that.
I would clarify.
Make you aware of whatever item we had to.
Yes.
I'm gonna clarify, because I set the agenda so you couldn't call up and have an agenda item removed from the consent agenda. It'd take a vote of the body to remove an item. So we put it on the consent agenda because I set the agenda with the mayor. Then it would come here and you would say, I want to remove that in the public forum. And if you get a, a motion in a second, that could be removed. I can't see why anybody would not take it off a consent agenda, but again.
So it takes a motion and a second to remove it from?
It does not?
Not by council member, no, I don't know about the audience thing she's dug up for Springfield.
Okay.
But no, under Robert's rules, they can request them to be removed from consent agenda. If they're removing it from the agenda entirely and there's already a motion on the table, then we have to have a motion.
Right.
To postpone, but.
Gotcha, but what I'm saying is you can't call up and say, hey, I want to take this from the, off the consent agenda tonight. You could say, hey, I want to ask that it be taken off the consent agenda. But if it's already posted, it's on the consent agenda, we cannot just remove that.
I would, I, and I would, I would kind of suggest with David that it, it is better for you to make your official request it be removed in the open meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that could get, that would get in some sort of charter.
Transparency.
And for Laura, yeah, she would have to backtrack and say, well, he requested, yeah.
It would be helpful to have advanced numbers though.
Sure, yeah. I'm not saying I'm gonna do that, I just, I just.
Just for heck now.
So any other question on question four? Question five?
All good questions.
Any question on question five?
No, or wait.
Everybody good on that one?
Yes, no, actually, I just, yeah, all good.
Question six?
Last one.
And if anyone understands this, just let me know. If there's seven questions on this, I give up. Andrew's gonna answer them. Anything that we have not covered in the charter that we should talk about that we have not presented?
One kind of random question brought on by the marijuana amendment thing and something that Chief Compton had mentioned at the meeting, have we looked at doing a vape tax?
I'm sorry, what?
Like a vaping tax? Because that's something a lot of communities have done and.
Really?
Because it replaces the cigarette tax, because a lot of people switch to that and.
We've gotten that question before, I have looked into it briefly. I, I would want to look into it again because the way that tax is written, and you've probably looked at the state statute, it's pretty narrow on what does and doesn't qualify as eligible for that tax. And I don't know, I have heard of other cities doing that. I just don't know for myself personally, as this city attorney, if it would hold water. I would just want to make sure, because there are questions I've gotten on whether we can tax other things over that, like smokeless tobacco, those types of things, and the answer is no. So I think vaping, I think there is an opinion out there that says it can be, I would just want to look at it. But that's not something that was brought to us at least before now, so we, we could consider it, but.
Yes. Any questions on six? Or, but we, we can look at, and here, and I'll say this, the mayor always does such a great job of propping those up. If there's something that you want or us to look into, that's a way that you would go about it. Would be at that, like, at the end of every council meeting, the mayor says, is there any announcements or things that we need to take up? That would be a time where you could present to the, to your peers ideas, say, say, such as the vape, have we looked at or considered it? And then what we, that pretty much initiates for us as a staff that we can bring that back. You know, we were asked about this, add it to the admin report, just ways that we can begin to get traction to some of your ideas like that. I've never even, I didn't even know there was a such thing as a vaping tax. Any other thoughts or comments on, on the proposed questions? Lord knows I want to make it nine again, but I think for just simplicity, we got a lot of people voting. But it's, there's a lot to be vote, within the budget, it's gonna be a big ballot.
That was like my only last question, was there anything, and you kind of covered it at the beginning, but was there anything else on here that you really think should be in here, but we're just not trying to overwhelm the voters and?
Yeah, could we go back to that? I, I think that, um, I seriously, now I may be outnumbered on this one, but I, I think there has to be consideration of talking about out-large council seats. I know the school board runs, they don't have wards or districts. And I'm not, I believe everyone's, I believe everyone represents the city. And most people that I've worked with that sit on these elected bodies, they'll take phone calls from people outside their ward and speak favorably to that. I understand the argument could be that you could get three people that live next door to one another, but I've not seen that ever. I think that that's something from the standpoint of getting more people out to, to run is an option, is an opportunity, but again, but it's, the procedure for excusing council members, I think we can do that by, it'd be cleaner if we would write it into the.
Ordinance.
Into the, into the charter, actually. But I don't think we have the time to get that done where, I mean, it's so convoluted about how to make that cleaner. But I would love to see this city administrator ability to hire outside legal counsel without coming within my spending authority. Because there's times you're like, I don't want to, waiting till, yeah, I'll just say, it'd be easier to, to remove that. Because there's times that we'll make phone calls where like, I can't really commission you to go do your work. And I'd like to say I followed that to exact letter of the law, but I'd like to get it cleaned up.
And, and right now, currently, you have to come to city council, have a first read and then a second read to make that happen with the executive session?
You gotta go to executive session. Yeah, because you have to talk about what the actual issue is. What I would recommend is to change that in the charter that the administrator would have the ability within his spending, his or her spending limit. But at the same time, that would report to council what, like, so the, the threat to that would be, well, wait a minute, we just got sued, he hired an attorney, nobody knows about it. So I would still suggest it's just like our purchasing policy. If we were to do that, we'd go an executive session and tell about what was, was happening and commissioning it if I, if I needed more money for, for said legal counsel. Right now, it's like you have to wait till the council meeting to, to do that technically.
Even under the $50,000 or whatever it was with the.
Well, the problem is right now, and everything you guys are talking about is great, the problem is nothing actually says that. And so what we have right now, the procedure we go through that he's talking about, the closed session and getting council approval that way, is a conglomeration of things. But at the end of the day, the charter for outside counsel references it once and once only. And it references it in the mayor powers section. And it only says the mayor, with advice and consent of council, may. May retain, you know, counsel to assist the city attorney, that's it. And it appears in a paragraph with other powers. That's not to the exclusion of anybody else by, by verbiage. But as an attorney, that I can tell you right now that 12 smart attorneys in a room, six of them could say, well, that, that doesn't mean other people can't. And other six are gonna say, sure does, heck yeah, that means that nobody else can. That's the situation that we are in currently. Is it urgent that we address that in the charter? And that's where we're trying to decide voter fatigue, you know, what is more important? And this was one that's, could we delegate that authority by code under the current charter language? Probably, we just kind of toss around ideas. And so this one sort of got pushed to the back burner because it is not super urgent and there are ways I think we can work with what we have now.
But because it could be viewed as a power grab, like you're changing all this stuff to the administrator. But really, from the flow of how we actually do business, it's really where it belongs. It could say, any, it could be the city administrator or city attorney has the ability to hire outside legal counsel or the finance director, but it just happens to be, it's under my purview.